Board of Education will come to order at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to begin with the work session scheduled for the FY 2015 operating budget?
I don't believe we need a motion for this, do we?
Well, let's have one. Let's who.
I move to open the work session.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Work session on FY 2015 operating budget. Dr. Marterano.
Okay, so, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
A lot of my friends here this afternoon that we've been working very closely with, so be patient with me at the beginning. I think we have about an hour to go through this. Then we have our regular board meeting today that continues to do the business of the school system at a very, very, very busy and robust time. Hard to believe in about four weeks, we will be sitting on stage together presenting diplomas to our graduates. And several of us just left an event where we acknowledged some scholarship award winners, and that's phenomenal as well. So I want to make certain in the constant noise that is out there right now, and that's expected. I mean, that's expected. Lots of people having conversations. I just want to make certain that things continue to be, as it goes out here with conversation and information is shared, that we bring it back to center so people know where we are. As I say to my staff and to representatives of our association, if you have not heard it from the mouth of the superintendent directly, it's not true. Until you hear from the school board and until you hear from the superintendent, that's when it becomes factual information. So through internal communications, we do a lot of that. We do that through a variety of different forms. I want to state publicly that I'm very, very proud of the Board of Education for your presentation that you made at the Board of County Commissioners on Monday. You handled yourself with high character, with poise and dignity, in a very, very knowledgeable manner as well. So I was very proud of you as we continued to move the process forward. You know, as I always state, nothing ever worth doing has ever occurred without great enthusiasm. That's Ralph Waldo Emerson. But also, nothing ever great has ever occurred without great collaboration and cooperation. And so, right now, we're in the process where I think back on my history of superintendency and every time, at this time of the year, it's always an event that we move forward in terms of the conversations about public dollars as they're devoted to public education. So I want to read some things today, which is a little atypical of me. I want to frame the conversation because actually Ms. McCourt's slides are only about three pages, and yet, board members, I'm going to ask for your indulgence and your patience. We are literally running nonstop. We are running fast. I typically won't say something personally, but many people in this room know that yesterday was my 55th birthday. That was a double nickel. That's, I am telling you right now, I am not driving the figurative speed limit. That's the speed limit. So you can be sure that my Fred Flintstone feet are going very, very fast in my conversations to respond, to solve the problem, and we have been working nonstop. And each part is a part in the process that gets us to the end, to get us through, because we still, with the acknowledgement, have to solve the problem in 14, and we have to then also address this in 15. And as you heard very clearly, all of you being very good students of the process, knew that as we started the revelation of 14, that we knew that we would have to adjust in 15. So today, as I take you to a macro level and specifically, we are going to do that today. So the questions that all of you ask, and you ask great questions that are pointed and focused to go back and have me think further, is the fact that how, what are we going to do to make certain we're not here again? Well, with certainty, I can never predict those aberrations or those skews regarding swings in weather and those kind of things that get in the way. And we make the adjustments through the normal process of categoricals. But in the terms of the volatility of health care, what do we do to kind of make certain that is stabilized, that that is adjusted in a way to prevent this from happening again? Today, I met, our day started very early at seven o'clock and have been in budget meetings all morning, as well as then with representatives from Care First today as well. So everybody is at the plate of collaboration and cooperation. I think we've been in touch with Elaine Kramer, who I want to publicly thank. You know, there's a lot of individuals that need to be acknowledged, but I view Elaine, who has been a former CFO of the school system, as someone who is a true partner in solving this problem with ideas that we've been vetting. I want to acknowledge Tammy, thank you for coming back every day. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, you know, in the sense that, as I've stated to you, it's, in our position, we have a grand plan that, as Greg was exiting the organization and announced his retirement, that has been accelerated, as you know, that we had a very efficient model in place that would allow the transition to occur, so that it'd be cross-training. Boy, thank goodness, you know, in terms of how fortuitous that was, because in our business, we talk about the aspect of baptism by fire, that there's no luxury for saying you're going to be in training for six months and then you assume the position. It's baptism by fire. I remember my first day on the job, superintendent came into executive session with the board and said, "It's your baby. You've got three problems to solve." You know, and all of those have been solved and many, many more in between. But Tammy, with her great authority and her great credentials as a CPA and her knowledge of county government, as well as the school system, has been very focused with the numbers. What I like most about her right now is her robust communications. It's not only Mr. Clemens that is hitting me up all night with, there it goes right now, I'll turn that off, with texts and emails, but Tammy is right in that rhythm of communication as well. So we're respectful of each other's time, but not really, in terms of when we have issues to communicate about. So we're on that. Tammy's going to have a part of the presentation today. We're going to mainly talk about 15, but I've got to take you back. So I want to do some reading to bring people up to speed as a good teacher, the next part of the lesson, the continuation. One of the things in a good lesson, you put closure on your lesson, and then you bring the students forward, you make the connection to the last lesson. So the last time that we talked, you know, we started on Monday with a very robust presentation to the county commissioners, conversation about solutions. I've been very diligent about my leadership style, which is predicated on, don't come to me with a problem and expect me to solve it without the conversation of solutions in mind. We solve them together. So those who work closely with me know that any time that there's a problem, come to me with three solutions. Same way with the board. Anytime we have a problem, we come to you with solutions that you can vet. So we presented that same leadership matrix to the Board of County Commissioners, the three options that you clearly understand, and we presented those, and then you masterfully and very, very clearly answered questions as we went, and it's part of the process. So let me, first of all, start with that. Since then, I have asked Ms. Kramer, both Tammy and I have met with her briefly, Tammy's been in touch with her, and we asked for very clear guidance regarding next steps. In your possession that was transmitted to you yesterday, a letter from the county commissioners yesterday that was signed, basically indicating their clarity, and I need clarity of thought. I don't need individuals presenting things in public, and like you as board members, we want to capture all of your thoughts, but where is the focus of those thoughts? So as a collective body, as a board, what is your representative needs that you have? And so, the same thing with the request of the commissioners as well, is after our presentations, there wasn't a lot of conversation on Monday regarding the three options, because people were looking for solutions. There was other conversations that occurred. I now need to focus as solving the problem. Time is of the essence, because, as those who know, that we have a very, very, very condensed schedule. So one of the things that you'll see at the end, I'm going to ask for an additional work session, because we have to turn this budget into the county in 15. My level of urgency has been accelerated, and because of the fact already, I should say it was already accelerated, because of the fact of the compressed timeline. Now it's even more so. So there's been conversation just today about communicating to you about the need for an additional work session next week, to make sure that this is clearly vetted. So I'm going to start with the letter, and there's something very clearly in here that I want to make certain we state. Keep in mind the dollars that we're going to be working with today that aren't on the screen yet, but we're looking at a county appropriation of $87,805,032, and that's, you know, recognizing where the maintenance of effort requirement was. Keep in mind that there was $3,417,429,000 county appropriation for the teacher pension, and $2,688,518,000 associated with county appropriation for OPEB trust, including $2 million of the county fund balance for that usage. That's a grand total of $93,910,979. So I see a lot of people writing those numbers down. I'm sorry, I'm talking fast, but that'll be on the screen. This is included in the letter as well. That's nothing any different, board members, than what I've communicated to you already. But what I need to focus you on is the $93,900,000 number is important. That's the total. But as far as any flexibility, the allocation of the 3.4 million for teacher pension, that's allocated for that particular purpose. The 2.6 million and some change is devoted to OPEB, that's already allocated for that portion. So for the conversation purposes of then dollars that are discretionary to put in for the other needs of the budget, is the total of the $87,805,032. That's what we're talking about. And again, for the consideration, I do appreciate the allocation from the commissioners regarding above maintenance of effort. The maintenance of effort requirement in comparison was $84,825,789. That's the bottom, that's the floor, as many of you had talked about. The increased dollars above that are the $87,805,005, and then I allocated the other piece. So I'm going to be focusing in on the $87 million is where I'm going to be focusing in on, because that combines with our state allocation and the federal allocation to get to the overall operating level to take care of all the other portions. Now, I want to read this clearly to you into the record. Part of the communication, Dr. Raspa, to you from the commissioners, obviously copying me, but as chairman of the board, this is signed by all the commissioners, elected official to elected official. We understand, and this is very clear in moving forward, we understand that the resolution of the FY 2014 issues may impact 2015 submission. Very good, because we've been saying that all along. I cannot have one issue addressed without making considerations to 15. I think that was one of the first things I shared with you, because anything we do in 14 has to be carried forward in 15, so that we are not, to use the expressions that I'm trying to avoid, the trite expression such as kicking the can down the road, that has been so used, but that's where we're trying to avoid. And then, for the purposes of preparing FY 15 budget, if we assume that option one, and remember what got caught up in the noise on Monday, is that solutions were presented and that option one says we can solve the problem on our own. We have worked very judiciously to do that. I talked about my reservations about if this would have been revealed to me sooner, I could have ran faster and for a longer period of time to possibly realize some additional savings. And my full acknowledgement of everybody in the school system for doing their part in that, and at the same time preserving the overall integrity of the classroom and the performance, because that's occurring at that level. So recognizing that for the purposes of preparing FY 15, assume that option one is exercised for FY 14. Clearly indicate any changes to FY 15 that we're going to be talking about, that would warrant should option two or three actually take place. In that letter that I sent to Commissioner Russell, was clearly articulated with specifics, letting people know what the expression that I'm using is inherent risks, and then each one of them had a different set of pressure points, to be a little bit more clear regarding that. So I want to enter with kind of that piece. I also want to talk to you about some other things that I want to also read to you, and as, again, as we begin this work session, there are a few things I really do want to share that are, that's new information. I wanted to bring you up to speed with this letter, our follow-up from Monday's meeting. I first want to let you know that Care First that I've met with today is the administrator of our health insurance program. They provide the school system with data regarding usage and cost percentages increase. They have been extremely accommodating of our requests. Again, we met with them for well over an hour today. They want to be a partner, as they always have been, with working with us as we institute our healthcare committee, review committee. They have additional data that has access to the trend data, that's new information for all of us, that we're getting firsthand from them today, that they will be a part of that, and been, again, extremely accommodating. They provide the information that we make decisions on how to utilize the information, and quite frankly, they've been outstanding. I've never had any problem with Care First. I have utmost confidence in their ability. Again, they are the provider, the administrator. The budget problem is not necessarily related to Care First services or their administration of the program, and then as we continue to refine all the information for next year, as we look to the rate increases, et cetera, we will take that into account from them. Second, again, I've already shared this, but once we learn of the budgetary shortfalls, primarily in the healthcare arena, you know, I've said, you know, over and over how fast we've been running, the question is, is, you know, how did we get here and why didn't we know sooner? I've been sharing that, you know, publicly. We've been clearly defining that with a level of specificity, and quite frankly, I've said, and I'm going to say it again, because I think it's important in terms of the psychological dimension of this, that thank goodness that we did know when we did, you know, in that sense, because typically where this would have emerged would have been around, you know, this time of the year, towards the last part, when the bubble sheets are presented, when things were moving along swimmingly, and then it would have been addressed as a major issue of concern in a categorical at the end of May. Through the normal process, as Mrs. Washington, several of you have expounded upon, and through the normal process, we deal with those. But again, you know, when we're dealing with those reserve pieces, there's only so much there that we can deal with internally. So by creating that internal savings our own, which is, again, good fiduciary work and responsible good storage, I'm still lamenting a little bit, had I known sooner, we could have ran faster for a longer period of time. That's my kind of proverbial quote for today. But again, early on, that I was informed of increased employee enrollment, increased prescription, I'm just reviewing this, more catastrophic allegations. The short of it is, the board explained yesterday, on Monday, to the Board of County Commissioners, there was a change of program offerings in the payment structure of the program which utilized when getting to the baseline for FY 14, which Ms. McCourt explained at the board meeting on April 23rd to the Board of County Commissioners on the 28th. Additionally, as the board shared with the commissioners yet on Monday, there was a rate increases that were not necessarily fully included, because we thought we would get additional budgetary savings, you know, in 13 and 14. This was a calculated decision in our finance office. We had said that over and over, but I want to reiterate the point, that in terms of certain savings not being realized and certain things being executed fully, you know, in that sense. These items in themselves may not be entirely responsible for that overall budget, but today, that we have today, but the deficit would have been considerably less, you know, in that sense. So I'm drilling down to that level of, you know, how do you define, you know, and move forward as, as all the noise is occurring. At the end of the day, my focus is on solving the problem, using the three continuous improvement questions, where have we been, where are we, and where are we going? They're very salient questions. So I start back with where are we and how did we get here? Where are we currently? How did we react when we knew? Again, I can lament and admire the problem, but at some point, you need to move forward and solve it. And then, as we move forward, where are we going? That's the issue of where are we going with the 14 issues, as well as then what we deal with in 15. So very clearly, from a problem-solving matrix, understand that point. Again, you know, Mr. Clemens and Ms. McCourt have been spending incredible hours on this with me in my office since it's been occurred. We presented the three proposals to the Board of County Commissioners that I presented to all of you. Those will continue to be vetted clearly, you know, as we move beyond the noise. And again, today, we will review the 15 and address those shortfalls in 14. But I have to reiterate, ladies and gentlemen, that health care is an extremely important part of our life. It is a dominant piece in terms of discussions. I just gave a speech to individuals down at the other part of the county, to some young people regarding this, that it's a dominant conversation, you know, in terms of placing it in terms of local news, national news, et cetera. This is not just us. I've shared with you, as I'm constantly reading feeds that are sent to me as a superintendent, the challenges presented in other districts, both nationwide, statewide, and regionally, and people are dealing with these same issues overall. Recognize it was never my intention or the Board of Commissioners placed guilt or blame on anybody, you know, in that sense. And then also, again, I've talked to you about the fact that we've met with Care First to talk about the budget problems as we move forward. Again, I want to also direct some attention to our associations who have been partners with us. You need to understand, because there was conversation on Monday regarding the associations, recognizing that different entities, county government, a good example, that do not have the unionized approach of which we do. And, you know, the collaboration that we've enjoyed with our associations, our three bargaining units, is palpable. It's real. We recognize that we examined the relationships in the past and how we wanted to define that road forward, that we are able to do that in a very collaborative way that takes a lot more time, you know, in that sense, but you build good relationships along the way, and that Mr. Clemens and Ms. McCourt, again, have followed up with Ms. Laskin, and again, on Monday afternoon, we will continue to be meeting with our representatives to discuss the next steps regarding the healthcare committee. But it's not as magical as all of a sudden, you know, we want to do some of these things that have to be negotiated, such as co-pays and things. That doesn't occur with me picking up the phone and getting the union presidents together and the Uniserv directors together and saying, "This is what we want to do, sign on the dotted line." It's a process of negotiations. So therefore, in the collective language, the better product emerges regarding that. The individuals that we work with, we have a very astute, highly educated workforce. Our teachers carry master degrees and doctor degrees and highly educated, knowledgeable, with other walks of life, experiences, and so therefore, you know, we take advantage of all the collective knowledge as we solve problems. So we will continue to make the recommendations to approve efficiency and effectiveness, but and they know this, this is not something that, as I look to the representatives in the audience, that we have to convene that again. There's a level of things that become, what we use the word, and I know several of our commissioners use the same word, that we're in sync with our vocabulary and language usage, is the sustainability, the sustainability of all of these things, such as utilities and health care, and I see several individuals in the audience who are, you know, also running for elected office. I mean, the reality is, have the conversations about the realities that we're all focused on, as opposed to then the noise that occurs, and that's part of it, I get all that. But the reality is, it's about health care right now? That's a real issue. It's about having conversations about fund balances and reserves, that when we do have swings and issues, whether it's snow removal, utilities, special education, contracted services, health care, whatever it is, how do we respond to that in a cogent format? How does that compare to other jurisdictions who have a more robust fund balance? And, you know, a couple people in this room, I've had great conversations with that. I mean, there's basically nonexistent reserves, and other school districts aren't able to carry reserves, so that when problems do emerge, they have to proceed to their funding source to have those issues. And again, my conversations back at the budget hearing, were very focused on more opportunity for collaboration and conversation in a non-vitriolic environment. So great minds sitting together for long periods of time, as opposed to 15-minute soundbites or two-minute soundbites. I'm not being critical, but the need for the conversation that occurs in a highly educated workforce, and we're in the business of educating, we're in the business of teaching young people how to critically think and solve problems, that we need to do that same kind of action in that. So I've talked to several of our individuals in this room about the need for summits and conversations to solve problems in a proactive way together, and I'm continuing down that path. So the real problem is about the health care issues, the competition for dollars, the judicious allocation of those dollars, but recognizing how we respond when swings occur in that razor-thin margin. And I have to continue to beat the drum on that and manage that as we go. So we find ourselves with the problem that we have and moving quickly in a timeframe to resolve this. And again, I think I've already stated, and I'll end where I started, and because I want to continue into the next part, the only way to truly resolve this, as I talked about, you know, great enthusiasm to solve the problem, there's a level of exhilaration to solve that problem, to get it done, but get it done in a meaningful way, but in a very collaborative, consensus-building manner that defines the character of who we are, because ultimately, the young people in the school district are going to look to me, you know, as a role model for young people. They're going to look to you as role models. And to hold ourselves highly accountable to the level of character in all of this has been something that we continue to strive for, because 18,000 young people look to us, our employees look to us. So I acknowledge our associations, you know, in the collaborative process, they too know that the need, but that's not with a level of me meeting with them today and it's all solved and defined. It's a process, and we recognize that. There's a great need for education, a great need for consumerism, and a great need to have the conversation about defining the variables, but no one should feel guilty about using the benefits that we provide, if you follow what I'm saying. I can talk about our demographics, I can talk about usage patterns, I can talk about the issue in terms of that we provide benefits for our retirees and for all of our employees, and you know, I think it's a palpable example, we are a large organization. It's a business. It's a business that we provide health care for over 5,000 employees and their family members. That's a lot of people that we add to those roles on a regular basis, combined with the variables that impact the health care administration, variables that are out of our control, unintended unfunded mandates that come down as a result of other policy decisions that I've shared with you, but brings us to that point. So I wanted to kind of bring the calm today, bring it back to center, and now move on to sort of the focus with 15. And we have for you today, three slides that take you through this journey of 15, because a lot of the work for 15 has been done through our recalibration and a response to 14. But there are some drawbacks to that. So I want to kind of go back to 15 and define our approach. So today, we present to you a balanced budget. So that's the first piece of really good news. We present to you a balanced budget, which has to be done by law. We have to also recognize that my target date for you to get to the Board of County Commissioners is May 15th. So now, we are very much running beyond that 55 mile an hour speed limit. So that's why the need for the additional session that I've talked about as well. Contained within the information today, and again, I appreciate and indulge your patience, because this is literally up to the 11th hour, we've been doing these things nonstop, that I still ascribe to the value that we are preserving the core, the core integrity of our classrooms. We are preserving the class size policies that this board has put in place, that you know, that I am a primary supporter of, because those who are sitting out on the sidelines who don't understand, there's a real method to the mythology, to the methodology of which we operate, a real method. So you have to be careful for everything that people perceive as, well, why don't you just do this? For every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. One of the things that I will not compromise is the reduction of classroom teachers that reduces the class size.
Increases.
Excuse me, that increases the class size, excuse me, and also gets into the variable of having combination classes, split classes. You've heard me talk about that ad nauseam throughout my history with you, that I've worked in environments where strictly the ratio is given, a simple math problem is conducted, the dividing of- the dividing of those numbers based upon the number of teachers, and the allocation is given to the principal and say, "Make it work." When I worked in other districts, at both the high school level as a high school principal, that was the allocation, when I worked as an elementary principal, and I had to make strategic decisions. Our principals are doing that now with the guidance of Kelly Hall at the elementary level, but we are avoiding those splits and combinations in that sense. So I want to say that very clearly, that's contained within here. I also want to say that we will be examining the cutback of specific staff members within the organization. But I have to frame that in the vantage point, for individuals who say, "Cut more administration, cut more of this, those singleton positions," I remind you, and I have the documentation, the pictures, you know, in my office, you know, covers of newspaper articles from 2011, under fire, cutting this, doing this, all those things. In 2011, I brought to you for approval the cutting of 57 administrative positions. Those positions have been cut, we have reduced our administrative allocation from 2.5 to 1.55 of the overall operating budget, and we have not added those positions back in. So keep in mind, as we've already gone thin, I've got people doing two and three jobs, very thin, lean team, people who say that kind of information, needs to understand that there's always a need for a central part of the organization to run, so that you don't have issues of effectiveness and efficiency. I can bring up the resurrection of tipping point, we've reached it. So I'm going to be very, very clear surgically about further cuts of that. I know there was conversations last time about the paraeducators.
Yes.
I know there was great conversation about that. But again, why did I focus on that the last time, needs to be asked. Because we have over 200 paraeducators in the school system, and you have to look at large numbers of where those are. And so what I can say is that no paraeducator, full-time paraeducator, will lose his or her job. That means individuals in our current FY15 budget that are allocated as full-time. But what I need to tell you is, that we're going to look at contracted services, and you would expect in terms of a model of efficiency, that I will be reducing contracted services by a significant amount, that would allow us the flexibility to add additional temporary paraeducators to the workforce if needed. So that's going to be adjusted. So if we have those needs, as I've been very clearly in communication with specific directors in here, there's going to have to be a reallocation of job responsibilities to meet those needs. Because individuals who look at things myopically, that's one way to do it. I have to always look globally, because if we don't provide that coverage and a need occurs with a student who has an IEP.
That's right.
Then we have ourselves into a legal issue, because an IEP carrier is a legal binding document, and has to be handled. What I can say also is that, you know, people don't always understand what years we're in in 15 and 14, and how the fiscal year is working, calendar year, and I have great respect for that, because we live and breathe this all day. I have great sensitivity and empathy and respect for our community members who don't always understand those moving pieces. There's been no adjustment to individuals not receiving services for their IEP that we have not been able to cover this year, if you follow what I'm saying. So through 14, we've still continued to keep that level of fidelity. The classrooms are running, the students are being serviced. I am so ramped up about graduations that I can taste it, I'm already onstage shaking those young people's hands. That's where our focus is right now. So that's a major piece, I want to be very clear about that. But in the arena of paraeducators, that we do have contracted services, I am proposing that we reduce that category by a certain piece that Tammy's going to talk about today. And the pressure point is, if we need that coverage, there will be a reallocation and the reestablishment of the people power within the school. Hope that makes sense. It's an efficiency. I also want to talk to you about, I'm going to examine the teaching positions. I know that it was very clearly defined, you know, by one of our commissioners on Monday regarding IRTs as well. Well, keep in mind that we have a significant number of instructional resource teachers that have outside responsibilities and they do a fine job. We're going to try to minimize that as much as possible, but the IRT positions will be examined, and we will be cutting back some of those positions. There is no question about that recommendation being come, but with a level of precision, because it's another category that in a few years ago, that we also gave notice to. I've met with the IRTs on Friday, I've informed the principals, and we're going to do that with a level of surgical precision as well, so that we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if you understand. But I'm looking at that, again, to preserve that core integrity of the classroom. The IRTs are great supports, but how do we do that? And again, I'm also trying to execute this without issuing, so I say this today, without issuing pink slips, because that was the great proverbial conversation in 2011. So right now, recognize, for not everybody who, people react before they have all the information, there's a process, we've got to go through it, that any position that I currently have had in the budget right now, you know is on freeze. We've not been hiring unless it's an absolute necessity and I have to sign off on it, it goes to that level of vetting. In an organization that large, that's a critical piece, what I just said, we have a whole Department of Human Resources that deals with the magnitude of applications. No position is being advanced in this current budget without my signature on it. So there will be no pink slips issued, we've got to hold on the current positions and any retiree positions that we currently have that are coming in, and we have been encouraging people, if they are going to be retiring, to try to accelerate that, but recognize the other variables that people don't always know. The notice for untenured teachers is May 1st. Is May 1st. So anybody who is an untenured teacher has until, what month am I in? It's April. They have till tomorrow to submit their resignation. So those have been coming in, people have life changes, et cetera. But tenured teachers have a different level of protection, they have until July 15th. And that's up until July 14th at 11:59, to be postmarked in that sense. So there's another cadre that could be teased out, but right now, we are working with a level of precision. Dale Farah, our Director of HR, is here, we have filled, we have put a freeze on all of those retiree positions, and we have stopped all of our recruiting efforts to save money as well, in terms of trips and doing the work, because that work now is occurring more online. If people have applications, that they're putting it online more, that's moving to that level. We have a whole battery, a whole fountain of applications online that we pull from. So all of those positions have been frozen, all those vacancies have been frozen, and any retiree comes in will be frozen, so that if we do reduce position, IRT, those individuals will strategically be placed in schools with their levels of certification, so that we shift those right in. Mrs. Crosby, you're correct.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying.
Exactly. So that with that process of attrition, the process of having vacancies, we, I do not have to issue the so-called notices of termination to individuals in that sense. And where that really trickles down to, I think that, you know, and this was much greater magnitude, you have to remember how 11 and 12 were. You know, this was a much greater magnitude. I've got all of these chronicled and filed at the level of efficiency. The hardest part about fiscal year 12, we were doing it in 11, calendar year 11, was the day that I had to meet with our untenured teachers and put them on notice. These are individuals that we recruited, who made lifestyle decisions to move with us, and then I had to turn around to say we were reducing the workforce, because they were the last in, they were untenured, and their protections are limited at that level. So what I can say today, because my concern is, the good news is that we have not disrupted the overall psychological morale, you know, people are watching with interest, but when we say these things, this keeps everybody calm to focus on the job that they're doing, is that we will not be having any untenured teachers being issued a notice of termination for non-renewal outside of the reasons that we typically go through, which are performance issues. We will, every year, regardless of the budgetary constraint, we are evaluating teachers, and that'll be a non-renewal based upon the levels of performance. That's occurring as well, and we will have some of those occurring. That work is occurring with our association reps, principals, et cetera, and individuals, that is occurring. But the normal process of me bringing those individuals together and putting them all on notice is not happening. So you follow that, what I'm saying? We are recalibrating the overall approach to the workforce, again, shrinking that at that level. I want to swing back around to the fact of the administrative positions I will be looking at with a level of precision again. Because we've already cut the 57 positions, I've got several positions right now on hold that we are evaluating in terms of absolute need for the organization, because as I cut thinner, it puts more pressure on the existing people, so I'm very, very concerned, so that as that gets great concern communicated, you know, "Cut more administrators," we have, we have. And so we've done that two years ago, three years ago, and I'm going to look at where we are currently with what I've defined as singleton positions, singleton N of ones, and that I will look at with a level of precision when those positions are vacant, and we have a few of those right now under review. And I'm not going to reveal any of those right now, because I am looking at those with balancing out, if those are cut, where else do we backfill? Because when we cut a position, the work still continues. Many people in here, sitting in this audience, can attest to that fact, that the work still has to be done, and two and three people doing that, and adjustments had to be made on salary scales and placements to avoid grievances and things such as that. Great communications with administrative representatives, it's very, very complex. The other thing that I want to say very clearly and firmly, very clearly and firmly, firmly, I have not once publicly used this word, unless I've said that we're not going to do it. Nowhere in FY14 have I said that we are going to currently furlough our employees. That's currently right now. So the school year will continue to move forward, the school year will continue to move forward. We've already made the modifications that have been acknowledged regarding the need for, you know, to make these adjustments in 14, the need to accelerate our cash flow with a disbursement. And that's a conversation that occurs regularly, because I educated the community by saying that that allocation does not come all at once, it comes in portions, and Tammy can describe that distribution table, we're accelerating that. So payroll will be met, the shortfall will be handled in 14 without executing any furloughs. The other piece is that I've balanced the budget for 15 with no intended furloughs for 15. It's very clear what I'm saying, very clear. No furloughs being adjusted. However, now the proverbial however, we do need to make examinations and adjustments to our healthcare based upon the fact that we are working with Care First to make the alignment with the projections that they've provided, to make certain that the last several years, there has not been an increase to our employees, there will be an increase for the contribution for the employees this year. There's been two years which we have not, this year we will. And I want to do that, Ms. McCourt, we've talked about this this morning, and you know I'm perseverating on this topic, that I want to explain to you, because when we say there's going to be a 5%, 10%, 15%, that's a large amount. But what that doesn't tell is the whole story. It's a certain percentage of an increase, then calculated based upon the amount per paycheck, calculated over 26 pay periods. So as that's divided out, the 15% may sound, or I don't want to give you a number, because that's not quite frankly determined, I don't want to put something out there, so any reporters who've written that down, take that back, I'm using examples. That sounds like large numbers, but when you then understand it in terms of what's the actual impact with real dollars, that's a different implementation. So I want to go at that level of detail for you this time, I don't think the board is always, that's not always communicated at the level which you need. We communicate that to our staff and it plays out in their paycheck distribution, but recognize that. We have made, in this budget, as Ms. McCourt is about to present to you, I'm probably going to have it done for you, Ms. McCourt, by the time it's finished, is the sense that we have made, Mrs. Washington, Dr. Raspa, Mr. Matthews, Mrs. Crosby, Mrs. Allen, the question that you dutifully asked and need to continue to ask, what adjustments are being made to the overall healthcare contributions to our proportion to avoid this? To also create a reserve for next year, because if we're executing option one, that depletes that. Tammy, to the tune of 6.5 million, we are contributing to the level of healthcare to create that, to the level where it needs to be. So the increases that we've received from the state, the increases that we've received from the county, to address the incremental increases in all the other categories that we've talked about, and the healthcare, that money is being devoted to that. So as I look at the big picture, the hope is, and the expectation is, that our employees will come back, many of our 12-month employees will continue, our teachers will come back, and they will have an increase in their healthcare contribution, they will have a job, they will fully with fidelity have their benefits, full fidelity, the promises made, promises kept, in terms of the benefit. And no one should feel guilty in terms of the execution of that benefit. But what I can say to you, and I've said very publicly, and I'm well aware of my lines, and I'm going to say it very clearly, we have very active advocates in this room, that there are, there is not money in the budget for increases for raises.
Next year.
For next year. We've had a couple of years where, you know, we've recouped our steps, we provided some adjustments with the different associations for SMAS, for the administrators, and it's been ebb and flow. I mean, this is the constant challenges with superintendents, with school districts right now across Maryland, through what we call the Maryland Negotiation Services, MNS, we get that data, we know where people have not and have got those. And that's disturbing to me, but the bigger picture is right now, the issue of keeping the employees whole, in terms of intact, preserving the integrity of the classroom, preserving the benefits, and structurally making the adjustments that we've done several times. And again, for the sustainability, and I think that's a very good word to continue to use, how is this sustainable? I mean, the conversation for me today, as I continue to learn, 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 more and more and more, when you talk to the actual people who are in the industry of healthcare, you know, the costs associated with this, the actual cost, I've got percentage breakdowns for what this actually looks like, although we say it's an 80/20 split for premium, the actual cost is about 96 to 4, in terms of actually we're paying versus the actual contribution from the employee, when you look at actually how co-pays are administered, et cetera, et cetera. We'll break that, Allen, a little further for you, because they're willing to come down and talk to you. But I wanted to be very clear upfront about what is inherently driving this budget today that I'm presenting to you, ultimately my budget to you, that has some further considerations in it that Tammy will, probably has been, Ms. McCourt, I should say, has been checking off as we go through this presentation, and we'll go through that piece as well. And again, I guess one final piece is that there's no SMCPS contribution for OPEB, I'm sorry, I missed the obvious.
When in 15.
For 15. Although, and I stated that the county portion of that is 2.6 million upfront, there is no additional portion from the school system, and again, we are closely at $30 million. So what I present, in that trust fund that we presented overall, I didn't, what I want to do is present this in a very cogent, clearly presentation, very directive in that sense, so that you'll have the questions that you need, but I end with where I began with all of this, appreciate your attention to detail, is that the FY15 budget, with great effort, is balanced right now, in tandem with 14 actions, with an eye to the future for 16 in that sense. So Tammy, without further ado, Ms. McCourt, please go to the microphone and fill in where I've missed. I've missed. So thank you for your time.
I'm not sure that I have much more to add at this point.
Sorry.
Which is great. So I'll just go through a few of the revenue adjustments that we made, and then expenditure adjustments as well. The budget as being presented at this time for discussion is balanced. The budget as originally recommended to the Board of County Commissioners totaled $202 million. With the revisions in place, we've reduced $7.4 million to a revised budget for discussion of $194 million. Now, the 194 million, 194.6 million represents a $5.4 million increase over the current fiscal year. Those increases are in the areas of county appropriation of $4 million, the teacher and pension contribution as per law of $266,000, with an equal reduction in county OPEB contribution. There is a reduction in the fund balance contribution, or the use of fund balance, of $2.5 million. A reduction in the other, I'm sorry, an increase in the other revenues of $611,000. Now, these numbers I'm quoting right now are not on the screen, these are the changes between 2014 and the 2015 revised.
Can you run through those one more time then, please?
Certainly, certainly. The increase from 2014 adopted and 2015 revised.
Is 5.4.
Is $5.4 million. County appropriation, $4 million. Teacher pension, $266,000. A reduction in the county appropriation to OPEB of $266,000. A reduction in the fund balance of $2.5 million. An increase in other revenues from $677,000 to $1.2 million, so about $611,000. And that's to recognize the increased cost of the pension as well. In conversations with MSD, we will be able to charge that, the grants component share to the grants, and recognize that as a revenue source within the local funds. State revenues remain unchanged at this point, based on original presentation. We will be getting final numbers from the state, typically they come out in June. And the federal revenues will be increasing from $2.1 million to $2.7 million, predominantly in the area of impact aid.
Okay.
On the expenditure side.
So, may I, this is why I ask a question? So pension costs are based on number of employees?
Pension costs are defined per state law, and they've been defined for, through 2016. There was an original calculation that was done several years ago, and the exact allocations are defined per that calculation.
Okay, so it's, it's?
It's non-adjusted every year.
Okay.
They are set in state law.
Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, obviously, carrying on, we're, Dr. Monarano left off, we made numerous changes in all the categories. You've noticed on the screen that every category has decreased with the exception of fixed charges, which houses the healthcare costs. The change between 2014 adopted budget of $38.8 million and the 2015 revised budget as presented of $46.8 million is a $7.9 million increase. 100% of that increase is in the area of health insurance. The specifics of these reductions are what Dr. Monarano addressed, so I won't go through every item on this list, but I do want to point out that one of the items that we had presented to the Board of County Commissioners and to the Board of Education is a need to establish a healthcare reserve within the budget, and we have done so here, to the tune of approximately $600,000. That is incorporated within that fixed charges increase. The other thing I would like to point out is that although there is no contribution in the 2015 budget for OPEB, that it needs to be carefully considered within the long-term financial plan of the board.
Say that again, please.
It needs to be considered within the long-term financial plan of the board.
What is the consequence for not paying into that for fiscal 15?
It reduces the amount available in the trust fund for future retirees.
Is there a penalty?
There is no penalty.
Yeah.
So that means we would have to pay more? We still owe that, correct?
We still owe that, that's correct.
So, how much, do you have any general idea how much that would be? And how much, so we'll be behind in that, so?
No, we're already behind.
Well, everybody's behind, but we don't want to get farther behind because it's a commitment that we made to the employees. So, do you have any general idea, how much should we be paying for 15, which we're deferring to 16, on top of what we were owed for 16?
Sure. We should be paying the ARC, which is a recommended amount per the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I don't have those exact figures with me.
And, do I recall that we were also preparing, or at some point in the process of having that updated? So we were waiting for new figures based on some of the healthcare changes we had made in terms of triple option, some other things. So, that's a number that's somewhat in flux anyway.
Yes, and actual evaluation is conducted and required to be conducted every two years, and this is the year that it needs to take place.
So let's, let's frame that a little higher, so that we're very clear. Since the inception of this, this is Gadsby 45, the Government Accounting Standard Bureau 45, in the allocation defines that if anybody, any entity, government entity, provides other post-employment benefits, hence the acronym OPEB, they must develop a trust fund and make contributions, because going back to that sustainability word, that you can't sustain this through the operating budget. If you're providing benefits for retirees, that you have to now be able to offset that with your own trust fund. So, we have 30 years to establish this trust fund that for us is well over $100 million with us. We have, like other school districts, have been tending to that very aggressively. We've been one of the most aggressive in that sense during down times economically. So when Tammy talks about the ARC, ARC is an acronym that is the annual retirement contribution. So in order, in theory, if you have 30 years to get to a level of where that trust fund should be, these are the contributions that you have to make. We, even prior to this, in the aggressive level which we've been operating, we have not kept up with that ARC. We are not there. We've said that through numerous occasions with it, and we have 30 years to get to it. I've shared with you selectively that many of my colleagues in other boards of education have ignored it outright because that's their way of balancing their budget. They're truly kicking the can down the road. I tell you the next piece because there's been conversation from people such as, like a good steward such as St. Mary's County, from county government as well as the school system, who've made contributions to it. How do you compare that to people who haven't, when this all comes home to roost? And so, there's been conversation, this has been communicated from Steve James from MAB, your association, that starting to have some conversations out there that there may be some assessment of local entities who have to provide this, and possible assessments of penalties, or findings that state that you're not keeping up with that overall. I haven't heard anything recently on that, but recognize that this puts us, there's still $2.6 million, I believe, allocated for this, but not the total amount that we had originally intended for that.
That's correct.
So, we will continue to go back, because we also have guidance from the county, that any additional monies that, you know, are to be revealed, that we would put those towards OPEB contributions. So I have that on the sideline through all of this, as we recalibrate, that we will continue to address that. But, Mrs. Washington, your question is well taken, but what we have to frame is, from the inception of this, we have not started off with what that ARC should be.
Yeah, well, that's true, but we don't want to be like the other systems.
Exactly.
Who are not paying into it. We have been aggressively bringing into it as much as we can, but we don't want to not put in there and then down the road.
Yep.
We don't have.
It comes home to roost.
Those other, correct. So, just something that we need to definitely keep an eye on.
And to, to your point about what the federal government may do. It, it has the very great possibility of impacting an entity's financial rating, so their, and their bonding authority. So, if that's downgraded, it then costs the entity that much more to borrow money.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we've tried. The one thing I will ask, I know that we, as a system, have been putting monies from our operating budget, allocating that into OPEB, and that the county's been putting monies in as well. It seems to be a point that keeps coming up, that this idea that we have not been. Once all of this dust settles, I certainly don't want this now, but I would really like to see a chart for maybe the past five or six years. What monies have we put in from our operating budget? What monies have the, have the, has the county then contributed? I know that, I have that at home in a lot of different places. I could pull it together, but I suspect.
We actually have that already compiled.
So, I would really appreciate being able to have that in hand, because I think that we certainly don't want to take credit for something that we haven't done, but I do think we need to be acknowledged for what we have done.
And delineated, I think it's a good point too, because I've been a little anty regarding the new actuarial, you know, amounts, force, to do an overall presentation. Let's shoot for the month of July, you know, to kind of give you that information.
That would be wonderful.
We've been giving it all along. But I also want to hearken one final point, not to beat this too far, because it's an important topic. Commissioner Morris has brought to my attention several times in the conversation, and I think it's a very good point, the acknowledgement of the number of school systems that have not kept up with it, and if you advance this down the road, and his question was very focused, and I really appreciated it, was will St. Mary's County be penalized down the road for being good stewards now? Because what he was envisioning was, this is going to come home to roost, people have it, and it's going to be another governmental bailout, that there's going to have to be this level of robust contributions, and because we've contributed, are we going to be penalized? So it's a really good thing to say, should, you know, you say, well, why should we contribute? Is it the essence of this? If down the road, others aren't contributing, how are they going to be bailed out from that? I think it's a very wise conversation, but it's also a wise conversation to say, we don't want to risk that.
Right.
And that's not the approach we're taking, but what we want to make certain of is our fair share is protected in all of this, and as you know, we are part of the MAB trust fund that has, I think, nine, 10 other members in it?
I believe 13.
13, exactly, thank you. And we are one of the highest, have one of the highest amounts, like one or two in terms of the overall amount. And I, and I'm privy to those other amounts, and it's not quite as robust. I think Calvert has their own individual account that they have as well.
That's correct.
So we're all approaching it to this level. What is disconcerting to me is the number of my colleagues who've shared with me, and probably with you too, who aren't paying attention to it, to advance their own challenges right now. And, you know, the union representatives, our association representatives, it's also hard to make a case for this, when you have young employees who don't necessarily think 30 years down the road. But when you have retirees in the audience, it's a palpable issue where people are thinking in the next couple of years of retiring. Very real.
Happens faster than you think.
Yeah, so great conversation. Continue, Ms. McCourt.
Right about that one.
The final point is that we are requesting a special meeting next week on May 7th to continue to refine and finalize the fiscal year 2014 and 2015 budget. We are in constant motion on this topic, continuing to refine internally, and welcome any questions that you may have at this time.
Very good.
All right, thank you. We have time for questions and comments. Mrs. Crosby, do you want to make any comments or questions?
Yes, I would. Okay, please.
I'm very happy with not only Dr. Monarano's presentation, but Ms. McCourt's presentation. I think that we're hitting the most important areas, which is the classroom. We're not hitting it, we're keeping, we're sustaining it. And that's what we want to do, more than anything. And again, that's classroom teachers, not necessarily getting rid of IRTs, but taking a critical look at where we need them, taking a look at retirees and positions that will be left open. As far as the monies go, you've done a good job with the, I like the details. I got, I don't understand it if I don't have the, I'm not a, an accountant, so you kind of have to lead me on a lot, okay? So you did a wonderful job explaining this on this report and Dr. Monarano. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Thank you for your questions along the way.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Where does this leave our 15 fund balance?
It depends on what the Board of County Commissioners do with the options one, two, and three.
Right. Right. And just, just to summarize things, the increases in funding that we're looking at in 15 don't cover our increases to our health insurance that we're putting in the budget. Is that how I'm seeing it?
If you're asking, are your increases in revenues covering your increase in expenditure in that one line? The answer is no.
No. But through adjustments.
Absolutely.
And cuts and recalibrating, yes. That's a very good observation.
Thanks for staying. It's a tough situation, but I'm glad we're moving forward with what we have to do. Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
I think you have done the best that you can do with a very tough situation. Less than six months here with SMCPS, you've done a wonderful job. The good news is pink slips will not be issued, that people, no one will lose their jobs, there will be no furloughs, that non-tenure teachers would only be released with poor performance, that we're going to look at the healthcare and trying to keep that whole for employees while making some changes. And we looked at sustainability, and that our budget is in balance. So, thank you for all your hard work, and we're going to continue to look for efficiencies and positions. Everything is being vetted.
Yep.
So we're going to run a leaner organization, as we always have done, but it's going to be even leaner, yeah, while remain, the classroom remaining intact.
That's important.
With paraeducators and all the people that we need, and no combination classrooms. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
You know, over the years, we, we have been very consistent in, in working to maintain and improve what's going on in the classroom. We have solved and addressed budget issues within the funds that we've been allocated. We have examined programs and ended programs that weren't working, or those that could be replaced by more effective programs. We have used the word reallocated so many times that I, I think there are nights where I am saying it in my sleep.
Because we didn't say rob Peter to pay Paul. I don't like that one.
No, it is. It is, you make decisions based on the budget you have. We do it in our home budgets. You know, you do it, you make choices every day. It doesn't matter what it is you're doing, you're making choices every single day. And... And sometimes we make good choices, sometimes we make choices that in hindsight you think, well, you know, maybe I shouldn't have bought that particular piece, I could have used those dollars elsewhere. You know, we do what we can. I look to something like APEX. We were able to end evening high school...
Correct.
So that we could utilize those dollars for APEX. A much more efficient and effective use of those dollars and that has demonstrated itself in the changes in our graduation rate. So I feel, I feel positive about what you've provided here. I'm really pleased that Blue Cross Blue Shield or Care First has had this extensive conversation today in going back through all of the budget paperwork I have. I actually have the July 2011 benefit renewal from Care First that gives a breakdown of the dollars spent on prescriptions and also the catastrophic illnesses over about six years and what levels they come in at. And it's interesting to look back on because, and so I'm very eager to see what they presented today or what they'll present to us, to see how that compares. You know, we are where we are and I think we've, I'm understanding that this board has accepted responsibility for what's happened, but we have to move forward and we have, this institution has to go on. We have no option to run a deficit budget. We, and so the fact that we went forward and were able to solve this problem internally with some great concerns, I mean, there will be...
Pressure points.
There will be significant pressure points, but it can be done. It though may come, you know, a year or two later where we, there's fallout from it. But it's, again, it's a choice, it's an option. We'll lay it all out and the commissioners and hopefully the public will also tune in and understand. If we do this, here's what the result is. If we do that, here's what the result is. I will end by saying not only thank you for what you've done and for you and for all your staff, because I know the hours that, just the small amount that I know that you've been doing pales in comparison to what I know your true hours are. Everyone is putting their heart and soul into this and I can see that anyplace I go. I find it interesting that in Charles County, our neighbor, there was an article on BayNet that I read yesterday in which Charles County government, in order to make their budget whole for the coming year, is going to have to, is proposing to raise taxes by $5 million, to cut services by $5 million. And for the remainder of about $3.4 million, they've asked the school system for their fund balance, to take a part of the Charles County Board of Ed fund balance to be able to cover county government shortfall. It's, yes, it's a little different. But at any rate, we will get beyond this and it informs us as we move forward.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. You've done a great job with the staff balancing the '15 budget, but at what expense, you know, there will be problems.
There are issues.
Yes, there will be issues and there are pressures. And of course, we're going to have to deal with this as we move on, the pressures. But again, it's a great beginning. We're headed in the right direction. We always talk about moving forward. This is a number one school system and we will continue to be a number one school system because that's what our people want. That's what our parents want, that's what our grandparents want, and you hear it all the time. They love our schools and our children are getting great experiences and they are being prepared for college and careers and they are succeeding. We went to a celebration the other night where our support service personnel were there. It was very well attended and I made remarks as being a family. And those people are very proud of the school system and their jobs and the Board of Education is very proud of our employees. And we are a family. We all work together and we want to make sure that our children in our school system succeed. The question that's still out there, and I know we're working on it, is the '14 thing. And we presented the conventions with the options and I'm sure we talked about this, but there are meetings set up or going to be set up based on the letter from President, Commissioner Russell in the future days or weeks so we can work through this with Elaine Kramer and other people of the staff over at the commissioner's office.
Yes, sir. We've already been in communication with Ms. Kramer and will continue to do so.
Okay, so we are currently in communication with her.
Absolutely. It's nonstop, it's like a direct hotline.
Okay, and because that, in order to proceed in a positive collaborative manner that we always try to do, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not falling down on this. We never have and I'm not insinuating that we have.
But they're at a higher level now in terms of communication. But Dr. Raspa, sorry to interrupt you, but the other piece that you have to realize, this is, you know, a great focal point and rightly so, is taking lots of our energy as a community as well as the school system, as well as everybody internally. A lot of vested interest, but we also have other work that's occurring too. And there's conversations that are back in the din of all of this regarding the CIP. And so keep in mind that there will be conversations in the very near future about that. I mean, we have a budget work session on Monday regarding that topic. So Brad, Mr. Clements, our deputy superintendent, is in great conversation regarding that piece as we still seek out the need for school sites, the advancement of our capital improvement projects, the Spring Ridge project, which is in motion. And again, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I would like to finish this train of thought.
Proceed.
That as we're dealing with '14 currently, we are developing '15, but my eye is on '16 as well. So I know it's hard for people to kind of keep up with all of those, but '16 is the year of which we opened the new school, the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, and the allocation need in there for additional staffing to open that school. And so I just continue to put that out there, but there was conversation in Mr. Commissioner Morris, it seemed like I'm referencing him many times here today because he made some very good points. On Monday, he talked about the FTE situation. Well, when you're a growing school system, it's very hard to continue to operate with staffing patterns. You have more children, you have to add more classrooms, you have to add more schools, you have to add staff, it goes along with it. Case in point, what the maintenance of effort formula is based upon, allocations, et cetera. So the piece that I want to say is there's no, another piece on this, there are no new FTEs in this budget. But there are three positions that we are reallocating, Mrs. Allen, to address those three needed positions mid-year for the new school. The principal, the building service manager, and the principal secretary. So those have been absorbed within this. The other piece that I want to acknowledge is there was conversation by several commissioners regarding the appetite for new programs. Keep in mind that we have a very strong strategic plan that is supported by data and the needs. There was, Commissioner Jarboe was excellent when he referenced the BRAC issues. And one of the first questions that the BRAC asks are, you know, in terms of people coming and going from the organization or the community, is the quality of the school system. And the conversations that I have with all the high-ranking folks on base about the incredible robust delivery model that we have and what parents are looking for, I want to say publicly that all of those programs will remain in place as we preserve the integrity of the classroom. The Forest Center, the STEM Program, the Global International Studies Program, the Academy of Finance, the Fairlead Academy, which is so near and dear to all of our hearts. And then the advancement of the case program by re, again, taking examination of continuous improvement, stop doing things that aren't and begin looking, how we absorb that in the current existing staffing structure to advance case for our farm bureau, et cetera. And then the examination of our Academy of Fine Arts that we're going to look at a much more watered-down version with a need for no more staff to handle that internally at Chopticon. So Dr. Mar and Laurel Dietz, our supervisor there, are working with our fine arts teachers to have those things happen because we have the infrastructure in place with the busing and all of that. So those are being advanced with no cost, no staff, but still accelerating the school system with an innovative approach. So as Dr. Raspa, you reminded me of those two items to say about '16 and the need for the staffing there because you've been very articulate and concerned about having the funds necessary as we go through all the CIP development. And, you know, right now we have in motion two projects that are $50 million. Captain Walter Francis Duke and the Spring Ridge in full motion. That's unheard of for a county our size, but very, very pleased that it's happening. And again, the forward funding from the county, et cetera. But Dr. Raspa, as well as other board members, have expressed the need to staff that as we open it up on August of '15. Come in quickly.
Absolutely. It'll be here before you know it.
It will be.
And we will need staff, there's no question about it. We don't want to put up a sign and I'm not going to say it. I've said it too many other times already about having a sign up there that new school sorry closed. No, obviously we need teachers. We're going to have children there and we need classroom teachers and we need a principal and a secretary and support personnel has to be there in order for the school to function. And everybody understands that. I don't think we have to go into any great, you know, elaborate dissertation on why that has to happen. Okay, it's 2:31. We have an executive session planned. The work session has ended. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I'm meant to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues. Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone who can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The board will now enter into executive session.